Okay, I'll send it. I'm gonna email it to you, Mike.
All right.
Yep.
It's noon. I don't think that we need. Well, we could say, well, certainly say the pledge of allegiance here, get the meeting started. So please join me in that. My pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
And with liberty and justice.
Yeah, go ahead, Tony. Give us a short prayer, will ya?
Sure. Dear God, thank you for a beautiful day and bringing us together for county business. We ask that you protect our county and all our residents today. And in your name, we ask you for this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, well, there's no sense. Well, first we'll do a roll call to get that. Sorry, Kylie, I think you're doing that.
Commissioner Kirchner.
Here.
Commissioner Paradiso.
Here.
Commissioner Shuff.
Here.
Okay, so there's some question as to whether we got enough time out to notify folks. So we're not gonna make any decisions today. Everything that we do are gonna be discussions. I don't think I need to approve any minutes from previously. So we'll just move forward. And the main topic is to discuss sheriff's requests on a number of items. I will kind of lead the discussion, I guess, and talk in general terms as to what I see. That I want to pull things off of the request that I think are either nonrecurring or things that we do need to at least discuss Thursday about doing something with. But we won't make any decisions about it today. So everything that I see. I know we're probably not all using the same page here, but 521, 21 countywide safety. One RN and five detention officers for ICE. I think that's something that we ought to probably discuss approving Thursday.
Commissioner gives the question. So what Stacy has up on the, on the board, you're just going down the list?
Yeah.
With that, okay, I'm just making sure. I, okay, I got it.
Well, the top one is five new deputies. So.
The top is roadside.
Yeah, the top is a roadside. Then I'm all the way down to.
Fractions.
Countywide safety, five. Five.
Forty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars.
And I'm, I'm with you. Thank you. Yep.
All right. So I think, I mean, at least from the way that I'm looking at it at this point, pretty much everything below that line, except for the software log system, because I'm not sure they understand that, at fifteen thousand. I think that's, is that five thousand or fifteen thousand?
For the licenses is fifteen.
Yes, fifteen thousand. So, you know, what I, what I'd like to do is maybe get, you know, things that are probable that we're gonna approve. And then things that we need to have a further discussion about. And the only thing that I'll add from my standpoint, my analysis. And I know that we talked about, about this, is that we did recall, everybody recall, we did do the two thousand dollars nonrecurring for the American Relief Plan. And we did do these, we are looking at the salary adjustments to get them in that range, which, which will probably be somewhere between three and four hundred thousand. And we did add an additional one hundred thirty-five thousand to bring the vehicles up to, up to speed. So we have, we have spent or will spend that money. So whenever we have our discussions, I think that at least has to be in the back of our minds as to some additional costs. I'll defer to the other commissioners for any discussion they might want to have.
Okay, yeah, on a, or maybe a global view, Stacy, a bigger picture view. You know, the, the number one responsibility of commissioners is the fiscal responsibility to maintain a balanced budget and, and to oversee the finances of the county. In my two terms through the budget process, it's my understanding that we cannot spend more than the budget commission certifies. Is that, for budget purposes, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, we have to pass a balanced budget. Yes. So whatever budget commission certifies that.
And, and we, we, we pry and probe and, and debate to increase that budget every year. So there's a little, little balance act between the auditor and the, the budget commission and the commissioners and, but in the end, we've settled in. And this year, it's eighteen-five?
Eighteen.
Eighteen even?
And she's got it as like eighteen million, fifty-three thousand.
Okay, so I don't know why I thought we got an extra five. So we're at eighteen million. So of the eighteen million current budget.
Well, Tony, let me interrupt. We did get.
Sure.
Just as we did get another five, because it was originally seventeen-five.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's what the five was.
Yeah, this was, you know, in the beginning discussion, yes.
Okay, okay. So we're at eighteen. And my hope, my point is, we know we have no other departments to look at. So I want to be careful not to approve incremental reoccurring cost, even if it makes sense now, because I, I don't know how much money we're gonna have. So and with COVID and last year being what it was, it's just everything's a little, little out of sync to me. So with that eighteen million that we currently have, how much have we? If we don't approve anything today, nothing. It's my understanding we have to negotiate that, our contract, which we support. Are we looking at maybe five hundred thousand of, of improvements? No matter what, without even looking at this list that we've already kind of have to do or agreed to do? Is that a fair statement?
You're talking about reoccurring?
Yes, with the sheriff. We got a million six. When you talk that number, if we don't do anything today, how much reoccurring expense have we authorized or were about to authorize back to Commissioner Kirchner's statement with you know, the backend corrections, contracts, et cetera? I just want to know, you know, I'm starting with that eighteen million and now we're layering expenses on top of that.
Right. I mean, well, we'll have the two percent increases because, because they weren't into negotiations at the time. And we, I guess we hope they, they accept our offer. But we gave the rest of the county two percent increases. So that'll be a reoccurring. And then whatever the union decides on, like Mike had mentioned, anywhere between three hundred and four hundred thousand. Bringing those, those employees up. Those are gonna be ongoing. And as some of the things you see on here, training's gonna be ongoing, travel's gonna be ongoing. Uniforms are gonna be ongoing, which we're not budgeted previously.
If we do everything below the line Commissioner Kirchner talked about, that's one, I'm looking here on top of my head, sixty-six, seventy-six. What is that, two hundred thirty thousand? Commissioner Kirchner, you're a banker.
Well, you have to remember that you have to double some of those lines. When we talk about reoccurring expenses, because salaries.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
But the five detention officers and the one RN are one forty-one, seven ninety-five for the rest of the year. Is that right?
Be correct for six months.
Okay, so that, I mean, call it two eighty.
So I, I guess in summary, maybe Commissioner Kirchner states you can help me. I'm looking at it from a, I mean, how much money do we have to spend? You can give me all the requests you want, and I, I feel for the sheriff. But we only have so much money. And that's what I'm trying to get my arms around. I understand with COVID and last year and you know, so we're kind of comparing things to maybe twenty nineteen with some inflationary bumps. But if we use the eighteen million, I'm aware of a couple other six-figure ask that are coming this year. I, I mean, where are we, what do we think we can spend? Can we spend nineteen million? You know, and then we have to kind of work backwards, I think. The only wild card would be the backend jail revenue. You know, if that's higher than, than a number, and I think the number's seven fifty for budget purposes, you know, we can kind of have that discussion. But I don't know if I want to authorize a bunch of expenses. And then we get to October and November when we're ready to do our next year budget. And budget commission authorizes a pot of money that could, it could be five hundred to a million less than what we are asked to approve here. I think that's a fair statement, isn't it?
Right. Yes. And we're gonna start budgets early this year, especially with budget commission. So we're starting that next month because we need a better idea going forward. Because I, I don't know what budget commission will do going forward. I know Julie has some concerns that, you know, the revenue is gonna turn the other direction. You know, sales tax has been holding us up quite well. So if they approve eighteen million for twenty twenty, is it gonna be eighteen million for twenty twenty-one? Now sheriff says that with these additional people for corrections, the nurse and the COs, that he can enter into a new contract with the feds and increase our per head count and then renegotiate with other counties to get, you know, we house other counties inmates because they are out of room. They pay us as well. So he was going to look at renegotiating that cost. Even at, at most, I think he was referring to anywhere between like one point three, one point five. So that takes us up to nineteen-five. But with all of the increases and all of the asks, just putting into a spreadsheet, we're over twenty million. And that's including, including anything you guys are aware of, but I'm not.
Right. Well, we're not, I guess you're probably as aware of as much stuff as we are, except that it's all pending. I mean, I know there's some conversations about probation. There's some conversations about, you know, other areas that could, we always have DJFS kind of hanging over our head. We never know. My calculation is, Tony, to answer your question from the beginning, is that if we approve everything below that line, the best I can tell you is that it's someplace about, on an annualized basis, about six seventy-five additional.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so have we approved anything this year up until this point, Stacy, that would add to what Commissioner Kirchner just said? On, on, I know we've improved one-time things, but, you know, purchasing vehicles, that kind of thing. Have we, have we added any ongoing new line items?
For the sheriff, obviously some training. He's wanting the ongoing training. He's, he's spent some in training that he didn't have before. He's also talked going forward, instead of the normal sixty grand a year for vehicles that we used to give previous administration. He's talking a hundred thousand instead of sixty thousand going forward. So I mean, obviously we haven't passed the budget, so you haven't approved it. But that was his, his ask when you guys approved the vehicles before.
And there is some regular, not only from the sheriff, but from the rest of the departments. There is some ongoing requests regarding training and travel that we did budget for. It seems like every week, at least every month, we've got requests for some additional training or travel money. I know that's not huge amounts, but they start to add up.
Well, I, I think I mentioned this in a prior meeting, and we're not deciding, we'll, we'll take this up on Thursday. But we, we kind of committed to the sheriff on a, to continue moving forward with the ICE arrangement. He had a meeting. He, he told us prior to the meeting what was gonna happen. He updated us after the meeting what happened. And it looks like the, you know, the federal government wants to continue using our site to be compliant. This request that you opened up with would be to help fulfill that. So it's kind of, we're kind of half-pregnant, if you will, on this one. So we add these five corrections officers plus the RN. We would then be in compliant. Everything would be up to code, et cetera, to jail, and we would be open for additional inmates. So I, I think we're optimistic this is gonna work, or we wouldn't be having this discussion. You know, that said, this is borderline risky, because this, we're clearly, you know, committing to this money without a guarantee for the inmates. So I, I think we mentioned this before, but I'd like, I, we could talk Thursday, but I'd like to wait to kind of see before we spend any more money. If this is six hundred and fifty thousand or six seventy-five, basically what you're telling me, Stacy, is we don't know what our revenue is gonna be. It's at eighteen million now. This is six seventy-five more in expenses. We have a balanced budget now. So there's six seventy-five we're gonna have to find. And hopefully some of that comes from the, the backend and, and from inmates. And we also know probation, et cetera. There's a couple six-figure ask out there. So I, I mean, until we know better what the revenue is and better what the jail is, I think I'm prepared to have a discussion Thursday on what we talked about. I don't see anything else there I would like to add or take off at this time. So those are my comments.
Hey, Tyler.
Yeah, I have a question. I know with us just hiring Jamie, this is one of the things she's gonna look at is look at different departments and do wage studies as far as different counties and governments go. But I would like to maybe speed up that process if we could, or see what comparable counties are spending on their sheriff's department, their jails. I know I'm looking at some of those numbers over the past few months, comparing us to other counties where we're losing a lot of our people. Are, are, are we right in line where we need to be as far as our annual budget goes for the sheriff's department? I guess I always like to look at comparables and comparable counties. So I mean, if we're at five point seven million per year for the sheriff's budget, he's asking for that increase, the one point six mil and all that. And he says it's a big ask, but I'd, I'd be curious to see where we fall in line with other counties. Then I also kind of agree with what Commissioner Paradiso said with the corrections. We are kind of halfway there. I mean, if we want to get more of these ICE individuals, we want to get a higher wage for each ICE individual. I mean, I, I feel like that's kind of the lower hanging fruit. But yeah, I'm, I'm open to have discussions Thursday as well. But it is scary, because we don't know what the sales tax is gonna do. And just looking a few months out, correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest portion of our sales tax would be automobiles, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
If you, if you look at all of our lots right now, no fault of their own, I mean, our lots are really drying up. They're empty. I see it firsthand. But I can see us lagging towards the end of the year, beginning of next, with auto sales and not being able to get vehicles and these chips and stuff. I know our budget's sitting really good right now, but I do have concerns about long-term sustainability.
Well, we have, Commissioner Shuff, we have looked at surrounding counties and counties of similar size as far as total sheriff's budgets. It's a little difficult because so much of our sheriff's budget relates to the jail. And a lot of counties don't have that, that size of facility, or are they housing that many inmates? So, you know, it's a little difficult to compare, because you're not looking at apples all the time. But for example, Seduska County sheriff's budget last year was about five point six million. And we were five point seven, and we are comparable in size. I mean, there are five or seven thousand folks ahead of us, but it's similar.
What about like Cuyahoga County when they had their ICE facility or Battle Creek? I mean, I, I know we looked at the sheriff's rates of pay for the surrounding counties. And I understand that, but the jail thing's kind of separate. I wasn't sure if we looked outside of our Northwest Ohio realm here and looked at the ones that do have the ICE program or the corrections or comparable facilities. But like I said, that was just a thought that I had. We're kind of a different animal than the other ones around us. But I, I see where the sheriff's wages are at with the corrections thing. And the ICE program kind of makes, makes us a little different or unique compared to the surrounding counties here in Northwest Ohio.
I think we have some of that, that was in executive session. That's part of what's being negotiated right now. So I think you'll be, you know, they need to come back to us. But at that point, you'll be able to see how we stack with others. Okay? Yeah. No, I, I do have a question. Anything else, Commissioner Shuff?
That's about all I had for right now. Yeah, with, with the ICE thing, I like, Sheriff Stevens has said, I mean, we can get more per inmate. We gotta meet some criteria. So I mean, I'm, I'm feeling more comfortable with that. There's a few things I think we could probably trim out of here, save monies on. But like I said, I've, I've mostly been listening to this and the sheriff and you guys. I'm, I'm warming up to it.
Yeah, we also got to remember that, you know, our ICE revenue used to be up to two million, and it has just slowly decreased over the last, you know, even just five years, going from one point six to one point three, one point one. You know, we only did nine hundred thousand last year. And if we're lucky, we're gonna do seven fifty this year. But look on, on the expense side, the expense side has not come down. So as I understand that, you know, indicates that we'll be bringing in revenue, we'll have an increased rate per head. But we've still not made up our revenue from the loss before, other than we've just been lucky enough that sales tax has been holding us out.
Yeah, so the expenses have held flat. Now we're adding, we're proposed adding more expenses related to the jail, right?
Yeah.
So this is the parting question I have. So in, in full session, you mentioned Stacy that, and I, I have about six different sheets here, okay, of jail, of sheriff numbers. But you had mentioned that if everything he asked for was approved, it would be a million six.
Yep.
On an annual basis. Okay, so something's not coming out, right? So Commissioner Kirchner basically, I think I heard him say, if we approve everything below the line, I guess then that would add six seventy-five here. So where's the other nine hundred?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it's, it's everything above the line. It's the.
I don't see, it doesn't equal nine hundred above the line. See what I mean? Like if the whole, if it's a million six and everything we're talking about today is seven hundred, if I could round it up, then where's the nine hundred? What are we asking? Of reoccurring. Now, I understand there's a lot of one-time things, right? But I think I heard you say reoccurring.
Yeah, because last year his, this key year's beginning budget was two million, just a little over two million on his roadside. If he gets everything that he's requested, including the additional people and the wage adjustments along with vehicles, the extra equipment. The increase is about seven hundred and forty thousand from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. That includes the wage increase. That includes the increases that we did for two percent salaries and all the other reoccurrences. So just on the road alone, if this is approved as requested, and that's the numbers that I had done, it's just. So on the jail side, it's about eight hundred and eighty thousand. With the increase, it started at three point six, and with the request, the recurrence would take it up to about four point five. So that's where the one point six.
Yeah, one of the things I'd be missing, Tony, is the fact that we do a readjustment of salaries, bringing up the that's a three or four hundred thousand dollar annualized number.
Yeah, I did miss that. You're right. So the current people that work there, right, they get a.
Let me, let me get you, let me get you there then. Okay, so.
Okay, yeah.
If I take the top line, now I understand you're gonna need to double each of those, because those are off for six months.
Right.
I take the road, these on down to the, the, the five detention officers. I'm coming up with about, I'm coming up with about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars additional. Just double, just double each of those. And if I got that four thirty, and I'm adding, call it three fifty for adjustments to wages, that's seven eighty, and then take my six seventy-five that I talked about, you are at a million, four, five, four, three, five.
Okay, that's good enough for me. All right, no, that's good clarification. And yeah, so this next step with the road people that the sheriff's requesting is a, a huge financial. It's just a lot of money. So before we could, before I could commit to that, I just kind of know more. So.
Now, I know we're not making any decisions today.
Right, right.
And I know that this is a way, you know, this is probably, you know, a, a big what-if. But, you know, the total sheriff's budget, the road officers, is two million, thirteen thousand dollars, it's two million, seventy-nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. It's a two million bucks for the sheriff and the road crew. It's three million, six eighty-one for the jail. So here's my question in a what-if world. What if we only housed the prisoners that were Soneka County prisoners from the courts? What would that number be? And, you know, if we've got salary and employees, employee salaries in the detention system of two point five million dollars, coming up on two point six million dollars, and total expenses of three point six million dollars, you know, what happens if we downsize or right-size or whatever your term you want to use with detention centers and take that burden away from the county? This is certainly an alternative and certainly not something that I'm suggesting today. But I do think that we know, gotta have that in our back pocket to understand that the majority of the money is not being spent by the sheriff himself and the road. The majority of the money is being spent by the, the criminal justice system or the jails and the detention. It's almost double what the sheriff's budget is.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's a fair question. I, I indirectly asked the sheriff similar question, because what happens if we did not continue with ICE versus where we're headed now, where we're doubling down and continuing with the ICE arrangement? What would your cost be? And so we'll just, I'll let him answer that. But, you know, the short answer to me was, high level was, you know, we've got all the fixed, we have to book them. We have to, we need a nurse. We need a, there's a lot of things. We have a hundred-plus local people in there all the time. So, but that is a good question. Something we should know. So I, I, yeah, I'm sure the sheriff could tell us that.
Well, there's just a number of things in there that would be.
Right.
A percentage smaller, right? Three hundred eighty thousand dollars for food, a hundred twenty-five thousand contract services, eighty thousand dollars.
Variable costs will go down. Yeah, no, that's right.
So each of those would go down proportionately to the number of prisoners.
Now, the positives, since we've gone full circle, breaking this down, okay, with locals only, and then revenue going down, I think the positive, which is just, there, there's not a guarantee, but if the sheriff could almost, if not double per day, the amount of money the county brings in per inmate, that's a huge difference. And I think, well, I know that's can be done, because that's what the published federal rate is, if you're a compliant facility. And that could swing us back the other way. I mean, if you could double anything, your price that you got last year and double it this year, it obviously would have an impact. So that. that you got last year and double it this year, um and it obviously would have an impact, so that, all that has to be I think vetted in this decision, you know, um. I'll I'll land there, I guess. Stacy, so for uh purposes of Thursday, we're not going to act on a contract to the backend until we have another meeting with they're still being, they're negotiating that, right? Okay, so that won't um happen, and we don't know how that's gonna add, but it's gonna be more, it's gonna be three hundred plus thousand more money than we spent last year. We do know that much.
Right.
Well, and then in the spirit of, in the spirit of recurring expenses.
Yeah.
Which is the hell out of me, if you look at other people's budgets, just from a whole dollar standpoint. You know, we're talking about a total budget of, uh we talked about this until we're blowing the face, of about five point six million dollars for the sheriff in twenty twenty-one, uh almost five point seven actually, uh but it is um eight million dollars in twenty twenty-five. Now, I don't know of any other department that has that trajectory. Uh I mean, there's gonna have to be a hell of a lot of income fill-in uh from prisoners, et cetera, to handle that kind of increase. I mean, we're we're talking about uh a million five and a million, we're talking about a two point five million dollar increase in those total budget lines, according to our projections, over the next three years. Twenty-two, twenty-three. So I mean, just to give us an idea, uh I mean, just to, you know, play devil's advocate here. Let's say that we're able in twenty twenty-five to have a certified amount of twenty million dollars. Uh let's further say that the sheriff's budget is eight million dollars. Uh eight uh divided by twenty is uh forty percent. That'll be forty percent of our entire budget, and right now, it is um five point six divided by eighteen about thirty-one percent. So it's exponentially growing, not only whole dollars, but as a percentage of the budget. That's a little, it's a little frightening.
Yeah, I think the whole key is what happens in the backend, you know, in that corrections facility. And um, well, it's not the whole key, but it's a big part of it.
Yeah, okay, so Thursday, we'll pull out those items that we kind of talked about that uh we can have a further discussion, make a decision that are either non-recurring or are recurring, but something that we feel we need to invest in, in order to generate more income for the detention system. Um and then talk about the other items. Uh and hopefully take a deep breath on those and see how income starts to flow from the facility.
Stacy, this whole uh, yeah, and I'm I'm ready to conclude as well, Mike, so. But Stacy, this whole conversation's been on recurring income, pretty much, right? Not the one-time. Okay.
Right.
Uh I know there are some, so if the sheriff is applying uh for anything using a grant, is it safe for me to assume that's a one-time? Uh is it possible that any of these grant applications would end up turning into permanent? Or are they usually not that?
Um usually not permanent. Um I know that uh when he was at the city, and I think Fostoria they've gotten the safer grant that can pay for employees for a few years, um but I don't know if he's looking at that grant for the sheriff's office or not. I know he'd gotten that for the city and Fostoria gets it too, but.
Is the safer grant still available, or I I thought that was just a temporary thing that they had a while back, is that ongoing?
Uh I think they offer that um every two years, every three years, I'll have to check.
Okay, so I I think you answered my question, so for, in in my mind, I I've got three buckets of reiterating the reoccurring revenue, general fund revenue, we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Then we have some capital improvements that the county's going to pay for. Um those stand on their own, and then I know there's a lot of, um there's a list of items the sheriff is working on for grants, so those grants would neither help offset anything here we're talking about. Nor would they add to what we're talking about, they're kind of a one and done.
Right.
Okay, so.
They're
Back to Commissioner Kersher, with ongoing expenses, if we take a chunk of money and do an improvement, it's done. Grants are grants, and so this conversation and Thursday's will be on reoccurring general fund annual budget. Okay, and and I'm I'm good, but there's a lot of moving parts, especially with the jail and the facilities and okay, I'm good.
Such a big ask.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, to summarize my numbers, and I think they're pretty close.
Yeah.
Well, what we've already approved and what we talked about approving um does indeed add six seventy-five to the uh reoccurring costs. Now, we're relying on part of that six seventy-five to be offset by detention income. But right now, all we know is we're guaranteeing the additional expense, and we're hoping for additional income.
And then Stacy, Stacy, if we have, we if, let's just say we approve a million dollars, okay? We can do that mid-year, or no? Do we still have that eh and take it out of reserves? Is that what would happen? It would come back to haunt us and we, it would, we'd have to deal with it for next year's budget, right?
Right, we have, we would have it in carryover, or we would be able to use it out of carryover, but.
So we're permitted to do these kind of things throughout the year, but but I guess we're, you know, we you know, for the sheriff's eyes, I think, and for others, we as commissioners, we do have, we are um we have to come and balance everything out as we go into next year. So we can't approve all this, and then when we get to next year to balance our budget, if we have more expenses authorized, we have to start cutting. So we could, in fact, in effect, approve this today and then go back to the sheriff and having and then cut his budget again. I mean, hypothetically, that could be done. Uh so we want to be careful. Yeah, I get it, I mean, I'm just trying to understand the cycle a little bit. Okay, so I think it's good that we are looking at, whatever we do on an ongoing basis, it has to feel right in the annual budget.
Yeah, we can't budget long-term expenses with our carry.
Right, okay. No, I'm good. You need a motion for adjournment?
Uh yeah, Tyler, anything else?
I'm just absorbing everything right now, I'm a little under the weather, I apologize, I'm little uh mazely here today, got a little bit of a sore throat, I'm just, I'm here absorbing everything.
All right, stay at home in your office then.
I will.
Yeah.
All right, so uh yeah, unless there's anything else, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.